Evening, everyone. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance as we call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heidi, please note that we have all board members present. Item 2.2 with conflicts of interest, are there any to report at this time? I actually do need to report a conflict of interest. It's been ongoing since my time on the board with the advertising contract that Stein-Sign Display has with the district, which should be noted was in effect before my time on the board as well. Is that sufficient, Heidi?
Yeah, but we will need a motion for that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this conflict of interest?
So moved.
We've got a motion by Mr. Iverson.
Second.
A second.
Lor, it was Lor, not me.
Yes. Here we go again. My left ear. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Thank you. Item 2.3, is there a motion to review and approve the agenda for this evening?
Mr. President, I move to amend the agenda to add item 5.5 under 14-4, discussion, to discuss student classroom enrollment numbers and student teacher ratios.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
You have a second by Lor. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion's been passed, so we will add that to the agenda. Is there a nay?
Nay.
Okay. So we have... Still pass, passes the...
We have four votes yes and one no, correct?
Right. Yep. I'm sorry. There would actually be three votes yes, two votes no for my vote as a nay.
So then it does pass, yeah?
Correct, yes. So, okay. All right, so that... Do we need to seek a motion with the revised agenda then?
Nope, then it passes.
No, just point of order. No, you don't.
Okay. All right, so we have item 2.3 passed and approved, and then we'll move to item 2.4 with the approval of the minutes for the November 12th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for November?
We have a motion by Lor.
Second.
And a second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll turn it over to Heidi with the financial report.
Thank you. In the general fund operation, taxes were received in the amount of $4.5 million for the month and are the final significant portion of the 2023 taxes payable in 2024. Capital outlay revenue included $2.8 million in taxes. Expenditures included construction in progress and debt service payments. This fund's ending cash position of $2.5 million is below that of the previous year, as expected and outlined in the budget. Special ed revenue consisted of the November property taxes along with adjusted state aid in the amount of $228,396. The ending cash position of $3.4 million reflects improvement over the prior two years. K-12 Nutrition Services noted that expenditures exceeded the revenue during the month with fluctuating inventory and students working through established lunch account payments with an ending cash balance of $173,613. Lake Area Technical College tuition and fees in relation to the first semester continue to be received. State aid quarters one and two payments of approximately $6 million was receded in December. This fund's ending cash position of $2.8 million is below that of the previous year due to payments in transit from the state. Once these payments are received, the balance will align closely with that of the prior year. In the bookstore and food service operations, sales and services continue to be strong as a direct reflection of the students attending LATC and the first semester activities. Educare reported revenue of $58,000 that was exceeded by the reported expenditures of $96,424. The expenditures included a payment towards the fire suppression project for the daycare and is supported by use of cash on hand. The fund's ending cash position of $341,000 is above that of the previous year. In the employee benefit trust, premium exceeded the administrative costs and claims during the month. We continue close monitoring of the claims-to-premium ratios as we evaluate future premium levels of the plan. This fund's ending cash position has declined from previous years. As we route our way through the last quarter of the year, high-cost claims will meet individual stop-loss and reinsurance credits will assist in offsetting the reportable high claims. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Heidi?
I also do have an announcement to make. The Watertown School District has received a generous $10,000 donation in memory of Mark Mandry. Mark and Don Mandry shared a deep commitment to ensuring children never had to bear the burden of school lunch debt. After Mark's passing in March of 2024, his family chose to honor his legacy by directing memorial contributions toward alleviating outstanding lunch balances. Their hope is to ease the worries of students and families affected by such debts. A proud graduate of Watertown High School, class of 1981, Mark was also the owner of Mark's Auto. This meaningful gesture reflects his enduring connection to the community and his passion for supporting its youth. Thank you to the Mandry family. The Watertown School District deeply appreciates your generosity.
Very nice. Very much appreciated. Thank you to the Mandry family. Okay, we'll transition to Dr. Danderson with the student and staff recognition.
All right. We've got some all-state chorus members here tonight. I've got the four board members have certificates. I'm hoping they're in order, but you might want to check yours to make sure when I call the name. So, students, I'm going to announce you by tenor, bass, soprano, altos, and then the alternates. So I'll have the... When I say the tenors, come on up. We'll have you come up, get your certificate. You get to look into the camera, and then we'll have the tenors kind of together, have you scoot down, and then we'll do the bass, same thing. And then we'll get one last shot of all of you in the camera. And if there are parents here who want to take pictures. So, we'll start with our tenors. David Lechner. Tyson Camfield. Jonas Geier. Sonny Raider. And Caleb Harlan. Let's give the tenors a round of applause. Hang on, not too fast. We want the tenors in one shot here in the camera. Wait until you're tenored, then you can scoot down. Here's our basses. Jordan Rickard. Wyatt Smunk. Blake Eicholtz. Quintus Von Staden. And Silas Massar. That's our basses. Oh, basses stay up here. One shot of you all. Look into the camera. All right, now we have our sopranos. Adiambu Ashweda. Olivia Strandle. Angie Block. Malia Hansen. Samantha Pessek. And Abby Kruger, alternate. There's our soprano. Okay, altos. Grace Remmers. Emma Harper, alternate. Marley Greenfield. Josie Altoff. Jenna Dahlke. And Mina Silas. All right, altos. All right, now let's get you all back out. Candace Von I, director. Congratulations. And we are, rather than change the location of the board meeting, we will be recognizing the 11 AA football, state football champion Watertown Arrows who defeated the peer governors on November 15th in the Dakota Dome. They are state champs. I think we have a picture to put up. It's on YouTube, but not in person, too. Okay. Coach John Hodorf and team, what we're going to do to honor our football team is we're going to try to attempt to get them all together. We've got some certificates for them where we've got a couple of board members that will meet them, pass them out, and try and get a picture again for the January board meeting. We had one failed attempt at that already prior to this board meeting, so we will try it again before the January board meeting. So, congratulations to the state championship football team, Watertown Arrows. We also have all-state orchestra that was in conjunction with the all-state chorus, so we'll get those in here in January as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll transition then to discussion items for Lake Area Technical College. If there's anyone here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, it appeared to be the case, so we'll welcome President Sanderson. Thank you very much for joining us, and we'll start with a legislative update.
Very good. Good evening, everybody. Share a few highlights of what we learned in terms of the upcoming session with last week's budget proposal that the governor delivered. In terms of the technical college system, a couple of highlights to share with you all. The first is that similar to K-12, the governor proposed a 1.25% increase to our state aid formula. Across the technical college system, that's an impact of over $440,000. Lake Area Tech receives between a third and 40% of that depending on student enrollments in any given year. And then beyond that, the state share of facility bond payments. So think about buildings on our campus that are state-owned, like the Student Services Center that were paid for with state bond dollars. The state, in addition to student fees, takes care of those debt services each year. And so the state share of that facility bond payment in FY '26 would increase by $135,000. The other two highlights aren't as rosy as those two pieces. The governor has proposed across statewide buildings, a cut to maintenance and repair, bringing the state share of that investment down to a 1.25% level. So we've worked with the state over the last many years to come to a shared agreement between maintenance and repair on state-owned facilities, where the tech colleges are putting in 1.75% of replacement value, and the state was doing the same. This cut will bring us down about $200,000 just at Lake Area Tech in terms of maintenance and repair on state-owned facilities. So if that were to go through all the way through the budget season in March, that would be a significant impact to what we're able to do in terms of care of our facilities and buildings on campus. The governor also proposed a cut to the state's reduced tuition dual credit program. That program went into effect in 2014 and has grown each year since. Every time we talk enrollment at Lake Area Tech, we talk about the number of high school students who are taking those reduced tuition dual credit through Lake Area Tech. And it's honestly a very important part of our pipeline for students. This fall, 23% of our freshmen came to us having taken dual credit through Lake Area Tech. The cut that was proposed in the governor's budget would cut the state share from about 2/3 of the cost down to 50%. So students this year are paying a little over $50 per credit for the dual credit program. If this proposal were to go all the way through, students would then pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $73 per credit. So it increases the share that students are paying as a junior or senior in high school. So some of those things will be, continue to be discussed over the next several months. Of course, this is the budget proposal at the very start of the process. The Board of Technical Education is meeting this week in Sioux Falls, and so the budget proposal and legislative approach will be a part of the discussion at that meeting. We'll also be meeting with local legislators prior to the start of legislative session, so those from the Watertown area understand the impacts and opportunities related to Lake Area Tech. As you all know, we've had discussions for more than a year about the system priorities to grow the number of graduates out of our system. And at a time when we're trying to respond to employers and make sure that they have trained, skilled workforce that they need to make their businesses successful, we want to make sure that we're able, as a technical college, to grow alongside of them and with their needs. And so the budget proposal, I fully understand that state revenues are tight and sales tax revenues are softer than they have been for the last several years. But it gives us a lot to think about as a board. Just looking ahead at what the process looks like, obviously legislative session will hash out a lot of these proposals, and the legislature will continue to look at state revenues over the next couple of months. The formal revenue setting process will happen in February. The state budget will be fully set in March. So following that March completion of legislative session, the State Board of Technical Education will come back together. They will set state-level tuition and fees. And then this group will come back together, and we'll look at local programmatic fees, whether that's at the course or department level. So throughout the next several months, we'll have more discussions about what we know throughout the process and what that might mean in terms of the fees and tuition that students pay and how we structure things at Lake Area Tech this next year. Those are the highlights, Mr. President. I'll stand by for any questions that board members might have.
As far as lobbying, obviously we have associated school boards, but for the tech schools, who would help you with that?
Yeah, so we've got a good crew on the lobbying front. Nick Wendell, who is the executive director of the Board of Technical Education, lobbies on behalf of the system. And the four tech colleges together have contracted with Redstone Law Firm. And Grace Beck is our lobbyist. She understands our system very well and does a nice job on our behalf. And then technical college presidents are in peer pretty frequently doing work on behalf of the system as well.
So anything we can do locally to contact our local legislators would help, too?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you for the update. We'll transition personnel with starting resignation, please.
Tonight I am working off of the updated blue sheet that you received just before the meeting. We all see one resignation. I see... Go ahead.
Oh, is there a motion to approve the resignation?
So moved.
There's a motion by Rosman.
Second.
A second by Lor. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to contract recommendations and addendums.
Thank you. Before you is a variety of contract recommendations for full-time staff, some adjunct instructors, some part-time work, and hourly staff. The addition that you'll see on today's agenda is for our dental hygiene program director. The program director accepted that appointment today and will join us in early February to lead off our dental hygiene program. Very first cohort starts in fall of '25.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums?
I will make a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums.
Got a motion by Lor.
Second.
A second by Rosman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's been approved. Move to property and start with the consideration of equipment lease agreements.
Very good. Before you is a variety of no-cost and low-cost equipment leases for use in our heavy equipment operator and our diesel programs. A big thank you to Transsource, Stan Houston, and Kibble Equipment for making these very affordable equipment leases available to us. Within the descriptions that you have before you, there are three-wheel loaders with buckets, $1,000 per month for a total of eight months each, two-wheel loaders at $1,000 per month for seven months each, an excavator for $1,000 a month for three total months, a telehandler for $1,500 for one month, and one skid loader at no cost for six months. Stand by for questions.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Iverson.
Second.
A second by Molten. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much to these industry partners. Couldn't do without them, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to the surplus resolution, please.
Very good. In your packet is a resolution containing two items. One is in our aviation maintenance program and updated trainer, older plane used for parts. It has gone beyond its useful life. And then pickup from our heavy equipment operator program, and we're seeking your approval to dispose of both of those items.
Is there a motion to approve?
We move approve the surplus resolution as explained.
There's a motion by Molten.
Second.
A second by Iverson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 4.2.3, we'll consider the Strategic Advisory Council appointment.
Thank you. Before you is a proposal to approve Doug Rathburn, who is the Director of Supply Chain at Terex, as our newest member to the Strategic Advisory Council for Lake Area Tech. He would replace Julie Hibbert, who has represented Terex in the manufacturing industry for the last number of years on that Strategic Advisory Council. Doug's been here in Watertown for the last two years, working with Terex. Prior to that, he has a couple of decades of experience working with John Deere in global supply chain management and is ready and interested to be of service to Lake Area Tech and represent the manufacturing industry. So his appointment would begin in January with your approval and conclude at the end of December 2027.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Iverson.
Second.
A second by Molten. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to item 5.1. If there's anyone here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items. Move to item 5.2, Northeast Tech High School report.
Yes, we have our December meeting on Wednesday, December 18th, so next Wednesday. Menu is probably to be determined yet, I would bet, but 5:45.
Sounds good. We'll be there. Item 5.3, we will hear a McKinley Early Childhood Update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Shannon Ahn, Principal at McKinley Early Childhood Center. We opened in August this year. Here's our homecoming picture with our kiddos wearing their purple Arrow shirts. We are all Arrow shirts. McKinley now has our early childhood programming, our four-year-old preschool. We have five sections of preschool, morning and afternoon. Those kiddos go to school every day this year. And then our junior kindergarten, this year we moved it to full days. So now we have two sections of kindergarten, where in the past we just had one. And then all of our kindergartners are at McKinley. So we have lots of learning opportunities for our youngest students in the Watertown School District. We have whole group activities. And a typical day in early, at the Early Childhood Center, we have math and science and social studies. Kids are learning together and in large groups, small groups. We're also reading and writing every day. We've incorporated cooperative play and technology into all of the subject areas. However, we do have time that technology and cooperative play is taught explicitly. And we call that purposeful playtime. You may have remembered this from past, but all of the kids have the opportunity every single day for some directed playtime where they, the teachers have centers set up, and they go to different areas in the classroom, and they're working on social skills and cooperating with their friends and sharing and being, using their imaginations, and also some real-life skills like working at a pumpkin stand or building. That's a big part of our day. They are also, we also have specials for all of our students, so art, music, physical education and health. And then, of course, library time, where they get to check out books from the big library, but also just to fall in love with that, with reading and learning. Something that's very important at the Early Childhood Center is learning those social skills and school expectations. So here's a few examples of what we do at McKinley, really simple. You know, how to use the bathroom appropriately. Go flush, wash, leave. It sounds simple, but we have to learn those things at school. How to eat in the lunchroom, how to walk in the hallway, how to get along with your friends, how to play on the playground at recess, how you go down the slide instead of climbing up it, and just safety. All of our students are allowed to eat breakfast in the mornings, and of course lunch. Our preschool morning class eats breakfast together every day. That's part of their curriculum. They're learning how to open their milk cartons and try new foods and hold their tray and dump their tray. And then the afternoon class eats lunch every day together. And of course, we go to recess every day, even when it's cold. Not when it's too cold, but they love to play in the snow. We have our beautiful new playground equipment. It looks beautiful that day, but... This is our sensory room. We use this for kiddos that might just need a little break from the classroom, or we also have occupational therapy and physical therapy in this classroom. We added some transportation options this year with our preschoolers. So that middle-of-the-day, parents might be at work. So we have buses that take, pick kids up from daycare, bring them to preschool, and vice versa. They might bring kids at the end of the day back to their daycares. And then, of course, we still have the morning and afternoon pickup for all kindergartners. And that has been working really well, and families have been utilizing that and appreciating that. At McKinley, we offer special education services. We house the birth-to-three program at McKinley. So we have babies at school getting evaluated, and it's so fun to have families coming in. We also have three-year-old special education direct services at McKinley, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech and language services for qualifying students. And if families are interested in this, we offer early childhood developmental screenings. This is on our website for the district and for McKinley. We have our next ones in January. A lot of times daycares or doctors might refer families. They just need to call McKinley and make an appointment, and we do that screening. This is our, we have new signage, so we're purple now, purple and gold, and we have, we're the Early Childhood Center. Here's some quotes from the staff. "We're really enjoying having all the little ones there, learning together." One more thing that I would add in March, it seems like a long time away, but it'll come very quickly. March 17th and 18th, right before spring break, will be our kindergarten roundup and preschool screening for families that are interested for next year. That is all I have for you today, if you have any questions.
So far has it met your personal expectations?
Yes, yes. It's a lot of fun, a lot of learning, a little bit of crying, but a lot of learning, a lot of smiles and happiness.
Staff first.
The staff are pretty happy. They're really enjoying having very like-minded educators all together and all working for a common goal and understanding that crying happens. We have to learn to share sometimes, and that's okay.
Well, for what it's worth, I personally haven't heard any negative feedback, so that's exciting.
Yeah.
Good job to not only you, but the district for pulling it off.
Thanks. Only got one example, and that's my own of my kiddo. And he was terrified at first just because it was different. You guys helped make that adjustment go really, really well, so I appreciate that on a personal note. So, thank you. But it's always fun to pop over there and see the energy and excitement in that building. There's a lot of energy. There is a lot. And it has been a seamless process. We appreciate all that the district did. And I'm not just saying that because I'm on the board, so thank you. Because as a parent, the, all the things you guys did to accommodate, to make pickup and drop off and timing, I guess my personal opinion is that's gone very well, and thank you. So, yeah.
Nice work.
Yeah, I think Wade and the transportation staff really, I mean, you know, we sold that, that that was going to be a big piece of it, and they've delivered. that that was going to be a big piece of it, and they've delivered for us in terms of the transportation part. And, you know, to be able to say to people that you weren't going to have to make all the drop-offs that people thought they were going to, if they allowed us to, you know, work for them, and I think that's happened.
Yes.
I picked one of the early days of school to stop in and visit, and it was one of those really hot days, which wasn't very smart. But I was just, I was so impressed with what I saw walking by the rooms and the kids. That many kindergartners in one place scares the daylights out of me. So I'm glad that you guys could do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to first reading of policies. Start with 5.4.1.
Yeah, we have, so AI, artificial intelligence, is becoming more prevalent in the world, and it, school is no different. And so, last year, the Associated School Boards put together a sample policy for schools to use to help guide usage of artificial intelligence. And so this is before you, a first reading. This is essentially the sample policy. We did not feel we needed to add anything or modify from what was recommended from our state organization there, so.
All right.
And then IKF, and for board members, I did give you a clean copy, if that's easier for to look at, for you to look at. But with the adoption of the new social studies standards for the class of 2029 and subsequent classes, it's looking like we're going to need to increase the number of required social studies classes, so to go from three to 3.5. And that would reduce the number of electives, thus going from 7.5 to 7. That's where the half-credit would come to increase the social studies. And then in the early graduation, you can see there's some edits to that, but one of the big things is the May 1st deadline for announcing the intention of the early graduation. So that would get to the high school office that allows the high school to plan for, from a scheduling and, you know, for that following fall to understand the early graduation process. So that's the big changes are what you see there. And again, this is a first reading. Both of those would be out before comment, before January.
Yes, take a second. 2025, fall?
So this would be, yes, because this would be next year's freshman, correct, Mrs. McClemmons? That would have the update? Yes. So the current high school students would still be following the old graduation requirements.
So it'll be for the kids coming in next year?
This year's eighth graders coming in would have the new.
So just, I want to make sure I understand the early graduations. So the students who wish to graduate early their senior year have to have notified the office by May of their June?
Of the year, of the year before.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move to 5.5, the student classroom, student ratio. I didn't quite, I wasn't able to write down the entire motion, but we have a board discussion here at this time.
Student classroom enrollment numbers and student teacher ratios.
Okay.
So at the elementary, we had one class that was larger. It was 27. That's been resolved. It's now at 25. Yeah. So that, that's good. What I want to look at, maybe hopefully have some ideas, discussion. And there's a big background to this. We'll talk in a bit. But here's another copy of the documents that you've all had before that I put together. This is for the high school. What I did is I went into the master schedule for Watertown High School, and I pulled out the core subjects, English, math, science, social studies, Spanish. And what I did was for each nine weeks, I looked at each teacher and the number of students that each teacher has. So for my copy, I went through and highlighted anything that was over 75, 70 to 75 per day. So for instance, here's a teacher who has 101 students per day. And for each nine weeks, I worked that out. And there's some reasons for some of this. Basically, what happened back in 2003 is that the teachers in this building, Watertown High School, were promised when we went to block scheduling that you would never have over 75 students as your ratio. So there are some problem areas. There are two teachers in particular. One has 178 students per day with six skinnes. So what we've done is changed from a world geography is now a skinny opposite algebra. So we've added skinnes, and I'll explain that, something that was done in 2007 that didn't work out very well. But it was try to resolve having students have algebra every day. With block scheduling, that wasn't true. Here's another teacher who has 174 students per day. Most of them, if you can see what I highlighted, almost every core teacher has a large number. So if you look deeper into many of these oversized classes, many of these classes are size 29 and 30 each. And if you look deeper into that, you find that students that make up those classes are inclusion, or there's English as a second language. So these are students that need a great deal more time, teacher time. So my worry is, are we burning out teachers? Are they so tired by these huge numbers at the end of the day? How can they adequately serve students? So, second semester, January's coming up. Are there solutions? There's something that can be done, something to think about. And I'll explain some more of this background in a bit. But these are large numbers, particularly in core classes. Second document, which you've all had previously. I went back to 2006. 2006, 2007. I looked at faculty list for Watertown High School, and then I compared it to 2024, 25. Again, I looked at the core subject areas, English, math, science, social studies, Spanish, foreign language, German, and then also alternative ed. That'd be Novan Eclipse back at that time. So I compared the number of teachers that we had in each of those areas to what we have now. And if you add up the total, we had 20 and 0.5 more teachers in 2006 than we do now. And there's some reasons for that. Again, these, these are issues that are hard to listen to, sometimes complicated to explain. But again, it's something I think we need to think about what can be done. So second semester, January's coming up. Is there something that could be done immediately? Well, when you look at these large numbers, each of these teachers and every teacher in the high school would have 20, 19 to 21 extra students in an advisory. That advisory meets every day, five days a week. Is it something that we can keep, or can we give relief to teachers immediately by reducing it to one day, reducing it to two days, eliminating it? It adds 20, 19 to 21 students per teacher per day. And that would certainly reduce some of these numbers. I know in talking to teachers, the lessons and advisory usually can be handled in one day. Maybe that other day is the day that they check grades and so on. But it's, again, something to think about. We have at least four staff at the high school, full-time equivalent. Of those four, only one half a day is involved in teaching. So I've heard that we can't afford more teachers. Well, maybe we need to think about how we allocate and use what we have on staff. Again, these are serious issues, hard to listen to. I'll give a short background if anyone has any questions or wants to add at this point. This didn't happen overnight. This happened over 20 years. It's 20 years of bad policies implemented step by step at Watertown High School. All of these were done without teacher approval or buy-in, for the most part. Again, cumulative effect of policies. This is how we end up where we are today. 2003, we added block scheduling that cut a one-year class to a semester. It cut a semester class to nine weeks. So you compressed what you were trying to teach. We were told at that time, well, just hit the highlights. Again, that's when the promise was made that each teacher would never have over 75 students total per day, which we are well over now. Several teachers chose to leave at that time. And prior to 2003, we had pretty high test scores, some of the highest in the state, actually. So switching to block became a concern because classes, particularly core classes, weren't consecutive. They didn't happen, you take freshman algebra first year, and then you move next year into sophomore math. Instead, it might have been a year, a year and a half before you took your second math class because block breaks things up in that manner. 2007, alternative education was discontinued off-campus. That was Novan Eclipse. We used to have, in fact, six alternative ed teachers. Now we have one. We have part-time pulled out from some of the core subject teachers that go over and help. This moved all the alternative ed students into the classrooms, into the building. This is hard to face, the discipline fractured. These are students that need special care, special types of learning environments, and we weren't equipped to handle that when they moved in. There was a mass exit of teachers. Many of them jumped across the street to Lake Area. 2007, 2009, the sophomores, juniors, and seniors were placed on a four-period schedule. Freshmen were placed on a six-period day. In other words, skinnes. So that meant that the freshman teachers were teaching up to 120 students a day. We lost some really good teachers over this. We simply burned them out, particularly in the science department. Again, that's, I'm really afraid we're going to have that happen again. 2012, creation of Arrow Academies, customized learning. This pulled eight core teachers, math, science, and so on, into a special entity handling about 200 students approximately. That left 1,000 students of the high school without adequate teachers. There was a shortage created, which is why you see these numbers continue. Again, this is cumulative over 20 years. And if you haven't been watching it, and watching it happen for 20 years, it's kind of hard to understand, particularly when you come in later. We've lost, and this is really hard to say, since 2007, over 140 teachers out of this building. In other words, we've replaced a faculty twice. Again, that's difficult to listen to. I am not placing blame anywhere. I am asking all of us to work together to come up with solutions, to think about this, talk about it. What can we do to improve, and particularly in light of what the state legislature might be doing to change public education. We need to have a school that is dynamic, viable. I'm recommending reforms and some serious look at some of these issues. So that is my explanation. And I'm hoping that we can all work together to think about this, and what we can do to help students, what we can do to help teachers, what we can do to make learning easier, and what we can do to make it easier to teach. Tough topic.
Jean, when you looked at the 140 teachers that have left since 2007, do you have the information on the why they left? Because I feel like that's a hard number to look at. You can take that from a very subjective approach where it's, you maybe have firsthand intel, but me as a non educator looking at that, yeah, that is a shock and awe, but there's also looking at natural attrition and retirements, and people who retired and went to Lake Area, and I think all of those factor in, that we can't just say 140 left because they didn't like it here. So that paints, I think, a skewed picture a little bit, so I struggle with that number.
Okay.
Being the target.
I kept a list since 2007. If you went back to 2003, you could add a few more, and I stopped the last couple of years because it keeps increasing. But I knew all of these people personally. I knew their personal stories. I knew the reasons that they left, and we talked about it all the time.
But how many would you say actually left because they had problems? That's an important number.
The vast majority because, A, discipline falling apart in 2007, and then the overcrowded classrooms later, and the fact that, particularly with block scheduling, you have to compress what you need to teach students so much, that there's so much more we know they need. So, yeah.
And I guess, looking at the numbers, I'm always in favor of looking at ways that we can make, you know, smaller class sizes. But like, looking at it, I know, is it the district's goal? I guess you guys could answer this. It's to keep classes under 30, right? That's at that level, seven through 12, is that correct?
Well, there's not a...
It's not written. The only policy is, as I gave you, is, that we have written, is the elementary class size. So we don't, but I think a standard, you know, what I would call, from a middle school, high school perspective, you would ought to keep them under 30.
Right.
If you can. So they generally fall into that. If we say 26 is ours for fourth, fifth, and sixth, then you would say your middle school, high school is 30 or under, depending on how your, you know, how your numbers fall.
The thing with classes of 29, 30 is it's falling on students that need extra help to a greater extent. And I think it factors in to a certain extent to attendance. If I'm stuck in a class, one class after another, that's large, and a teacher doesn't have time to help me, why should I show up? So I, you know, it's, I think that becomes a factor, too. There's no question that a class of 25 gets more teacher time than a larger class, particularly when you add in inclusion students and other students that need more time. particularly when you add in inclusion students and other students that need more time, which is what many of those are. So for six years, I kind of asked if we could, and I've never been really acknowledged whether this has happened, when the master computer schedule is run, to set the variable for each class size to twenty-five, and that would show you, I would think, how many teachers were short. Just as something to look at.
We set it at twenty-six initially.
Initially? Good.
In our inclusion classes, we set it lower, and we have two teachers in all those classes.
Yeah.
We have no classes above thirty, and we have several all twenty-five.
Yep, I've gone through all those numbers too. It was still a high number that I counted, at least twenty-nine to thirty. I did go through this as well. Again, this is a twenty-year commune, you know, thing that's happened.
I would affect them with the ones that are doing the skinnies, I should, that didn't, and they prefer the skinnies. Even though it's twice as many kids.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate that.
What it boils down to is if, if we want to set class size at twenty-five or twenty-six, we're going to have to spend more money.
Or cut areas.
Or cut something, yeah, or move.
Probably, maybe. Again, we do have four people already on staff that are not in the classroom full-time. Only one of them goes across to all, all day, part of the day. The rest do not.
But we have to look at value-added for those positions because they're working, they're doing things, so they're not contributing. So it would be looking at, you know, involvement that way too.
You know, it's difficult to, I mean, we can't go back and change the past, so when I see the initiatives, I mean, they're over ten years old. You know, we've made adjustments to Arrow Academy with how we utilize the staff in there that have impacted some of the thoughts on the ratios. Another piece, what year did you say President Sanderson, the dual credit started, two thousand and fourteen? So that program has continued to grow so that we have more students. When President Sanderson gives her numbers of how many students who end up at Lake area who've already taken dual credit, well, a number of those are Watertown High School kids, so that does decrease the number of staff members needed, you know, on this side. So that plays a part in some of the numbers. We have added the alternative program back in. We're in year two, so I, you know, we're trying to make logical address, you know, the logical addressing of what we see as, you know, it might have been an issue in two thousand and seven, maybe it's not an issue now, and so I don't think there's a need to say we have to revert back to whatever it looked like in two thousand and seven, or if it's not an issue at this time. So I mean, that's how we've at least been administering, you know, what the eye test says right now, or what, you know, feedback we get working with staff and...
Well, if I didn't emphasize it enough, the initial problem was when Arrow Academy was created. That's when immediately, one thousand students were left short of teachers. Class sizes increased immediately because it pulled out those eight core teachers. I think there's what, six over there now, five or six as teachers in Arrow Academy? They've, initially, they didn't have much of a load. Some of them have picked up more of a load of students. But that was immediately when it happened, two thousand and twelve, creation of Arrow Academy.
Jean, I really appreciate, I really appreciate your passion on this topic. I know that it's been on your mind for quite some time, and even though I wasn't in favor of the motion, I'm grateful that you've garnered the support to have the motion and have the discussion. You started off with a couple of questions, which were, are we burning out teachers, and how can we, how can they adequately serve our students, right? Those are your concerns.
Definitely.
Right, great questions to ask. I would say that, my opinion on this, is that based on the feedback from Mrs. McClemmons here, which is that the teachers are preferring the skinnies, okay, that's good to know. That we are not exceeding the thirty in the classroom, although it could be in the twenty-nine range, which is higher than ideal. We're not less than twenty-five, I think was the other information. Several below twenty-five, which is good. Is it a perfect setup? No, I don't like seeing this lopsided number with Capenman and McElroy. That is certainly concerning. If there's something that could be done there to level out the load, I think that that is a very fair point. I mean, at the end of the day, I am the first to admit, I am definitely not the expert when it comes to this stuff, and I appreciate the background and expertise that you bring to it, because I certainly don't have that skill set. But what I do know is that we did hire Dr. Danielson to help manage and navigate these decisions, and if we are, as a board, are asking Dr. Danielson to pivot and to change direction, we can certainly do that, but that comes with support from all board members, or at least a majority. And to this point, anyway, I personally have not been getting feedback from Mrs. McClemmons or high school staff indicating that the system is out of whack, and we are at risk of burning out teachers and not adequately able to serve students. So I'm just trying to balance the facts that I've been given with my limited skill set and my limited expertise, and heavily relying on Dr. Danielson to help us navigate this. But again, I'm grateful that you were able to garner the support of the board to have the discussion. Now it's up to the board to provide clarity to Dr. Danielson if this is an area that we need to pivot towards. That's my take on the situation.
Well said. I would agree with all that.
One of the things, Jean, that you mentioned, and I think is very valid, is the issue of the homerooms, you know, and that's, we kind of have to defer to you guys because you're, you know, you're trying to create a culture here. And I guess, one of the things that makes people cynical is when you start a program, stop a program, start a program. And so, you know, before we chop that off at the knees, I mean, we need to make sure that, that it's not, there's more negatives to it than there are positives, and in that, I've got to defer to you and your staff, and the feedback you're getting from them.
I know I've gotten emails from parents that gave us for it in regards to the relationships their kids have forged with their advisors. In some cases, that's been the best relationship they've had because they have the person for four years. So there's been some positive feedback from parents from that. Each day has its own role. When you talk about checking, and I've been an academic advisor for part of the two days, as well as the lessons, social-emotional learning, which is a huge need, I think, today with kids and navigating all the things going on in the world today in their lives, just, there's a lot of challenges for kids, I think, with that. And then Friday is a lot of team building. We do service learning projects throughout the year. There's a whole lot of different things. We do competitions within our buildings, you know, different contests going on. There's a lot of different things. It is not a fine thing for teachers to have a roadmap out, or a calendar, the rooms are all drafted there, just after they do it, but they don't have to go and look for things or anything of that. It's all created for them. And so we try to take all of that out of the equation for them, so it's pretty well-built, you know, a team that does that for them. We've done surveys different times of the kids and of the staff in that regard, wins with fidelity. We get really good results with that, so. But that's something we'll continue to use as far as assessing as we go as well.
I would just add too, this last year, we put a lot of work into the strategic plan. To one of, one of the action steps in here, establish a twelve, a seven-twelve work group to review course offerings and staffing, making recommendations to better meet student needs. That's just one example of something that's in the student success portion of the strategic plan, and there's probably other, because we also have an area focused on staff success as well. But that strategic plan was put together with community input, and staff, and board, and approved by the board, and so I think there's probably things within our plan as well that we can use to help guide us and address some of these areas of concern that you bring up too, Jean. So I think it is, it is laid out for us in the plan, and I think it's up to the, obviously, as admin and staff and board members, to make sure that that part of the plan gets implemented as well.
I guess my thought, Jean and board, was that we have Dr. Danielson's review coming up in January, and typically that's when we would assign some various goals and objectives. And if we feel, as a board, if that is, if this is something that we need to have him do a deeper dive on, that could be an appropriate time to, again, add some traction to this, again, if it's a board agreement.
Any other questions, comments on this topic?
Something we can all work on, work together.
I will remind the board, we did hire an additional Spanish teacher for second semester, so that, you know, that's, that's part of it, is the hiring process and finding people to fill the jobs, so.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, we'll transition to item six point one and seek a motion to approve the bills, please.
So moved.
A motion by Iverson.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions, comments on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get those bills paid eventually. Opposed? Okay, the motion's been approved. Item six point two point one, we'll start with the retirement, please.
One, retirement, Richard Comas, bus driver and general maintenance, and would recommend approval of his retirement.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions, comments?
Thanks for a lot of years of service in a lot of different capacities.
Thank you, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to the contract, no, we'll move to resignations, please.
Yep, three resignations on there, one additional highlighted on the green sheet for you, a couple of advisor extracurricular positions, and then we were almost staffed full for custodial at the middle school, three days.
Jigs that.
So one there that we are advertising for, so would recommend your approval of those.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resignation?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations.
We've got a motion by Laura and a second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignation's been accepted. We'll move to the authority to hire.
Three positions being requested by Dr. Ballinger, Special Education Department, two one-on-one paraprofessionals, and one all ed, special education paraprofessional. Would recommend your approval of those authority to hire.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item six point two point four, contract recommendations and addendums?
Some curriculum hours on here, second payment of teacher apprenticeship. Once our mentors submit their hourly mentor sheet, they get an additional two hundred and fifty dollars from the state, so that is listed there. And then some additional hires, we did fill our family support specialist position, filled a special education position at the intermediate school with a recent graduate, staff who will be completing dual credit classes at the high school level. And then also paras hired two at McKinley and one at Millet. Would recommend your approval of those.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums.
We have a motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Move to property, item six point three point one, with the consideration of the supplemental budget.
Thank you. The proposed supplemental budget provides modifications to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget to accommodate the increased expenditure allocations and offsets through identified revenue supports. The budget modification totals two million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, bringing the budget operation to one hundred and thirty-one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The general fund received increased funding in the support of, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for Title IC migrant funding passed through from the state. Increased expenditures include a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars in liability insurance costs. Capital Outlay received an insurance reimbursement for the Jefferson Water Main break, and they did not pay us back for missing school that afternoon. And is also identifying one point eight million dollar increase to Capital Outlay certificate funding in support of the athletic complex. Expenditures include fifty percent down on the Millet Gym Project called out for in FY twenty-six, as well as work in progress on the Millet and McKinley Cooling Project slated for completion in FY twenty-six. Special education includes fifty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars in increased expenditures to support the authority to hires of the three paraprofessionals. L A T C included increased revenue in the A T E federal program, Dakota Dreams, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar contribution from Horton in support of an equipment purchase. Increased expenditures include a hundred and one thousand, five hundred dollars in liability insurance increase, increased support in identified programs, contracted services for departments, and construction in progress for the archway that rolled into FY twenty-five in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. L A T C daycare noted an increase of ninety thousand dollars for a fire suppression project. And the bookstore had three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in increased resale items with sales as the offset revenue support. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
How many times a year do we do a supplemental budget?
Usually in December, and then usually we have one at the end of the fiscal year in June.
Is there a motion to approve the supplemental budget?
I move we approve the supplemental budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by Moulton, second by Iverson. Any additional questions, comments?
Thank you for keeping us up to date.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Thank you, Heidi. Six point three point two, consider the change order on number four.
Yes, the proposed change order for the athletic complex consists of five modifications to the project in the amount of a thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven addition to the contract. The changes include rerouting electrical construction around the track, updating the concessions countertops to stainless steel for durability purposes, and a minimal adjustments to cold water connections, rock around retaining wall and door controls. The construction contingency was approved at five hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, and the change order adjusts the remaining contingency to five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the change order as explained.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments on the change order? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Move to the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
Okay, you have a draft of that before you. Thanks to Jean for representing on the board on that. We had a committee made up of staff members and admin, and then Jean as the board rep. So when we look at it, the August would mirror our calendar from this year. What we have typically done is started on a Thursday, had two days, and then a full week before Labor Day, so we get seven days of school in with some in-service and pre-parent teacher conferences. Two of those would be built-in snow days. Then September and October look very familiar in the... Then September and October look very familiar. In November, we have conferences. Would like to work with the Veterans Group again on the 11th to have a Veterans Day program. That went really well a couple of years ago when we hosted a community Veterans Day program in the arena. And so we are hopeful that we can do that again. Do not have those finalized yet. And then would take the Wednesday off of Thanksgiving all day again. December have, with a 12:30 dismissal on December 23rd, and then break would run through January 5th. And then February would have 12, on the 12th, a 12:30 dismissal with conferences from 1 to 8. We would, to get to the two full days there, we would do what we would call a virtual in-service half day. We did something like that last year where staff had to work on something, had to get it done. And then staff and students would have that four-day weekend there around President's Day. March is a similar spring break. Easter happens to be the first weekend in April. And then with a dismissal on May 22nd, the Friday before Memorial Day. Graduation would then be on that Sunday, the 24th. Then makeup days, the two would be built in, and the four after Memorial Day.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson?
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions, comments?
Just one question. Last year, there was a different calendar for, maybe I'm not seeing it yet.
Oh, never mind, it's in there, for the preschool.
Yes.
It's in there. I just missed it, so.
Yep, there are some,
No comment.
There are some additional, the preschool runs just a little different schedule with that. Like, for example, the morning-afternoon flips. And then like Mrs. Knopf announced, you know, the 17, the spring break week, so.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
Thanks for your help on this, Jean.
Do you, Dr. Danielson, do you want to mention just on the Veterans Day holiday?
Oh, yeah, for 12-month staff, if we do not take veteran, the actual Veterans Day off, that is noted. But so 12-month staff would not, and for paid holiday purposes, what we would actually do is have that Black Friday off, which has been happening mainly, but people are taking vacation for that. That would be a little different at what the Lake, depending on the Lake Area calendar. But on the K-12 side, that's how we would attempt to take care of it.
Uh-oh, Heidi, we have a first and a second, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Now do the second reading of the policies. Start with 6.5.1 DID.
Yep, no changes from last month to that. And that was just an increase to that equipment value.
Is there a motion to approve DID?
I'll move approval of DID.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Second reading of IJL.
Yes, no changes to that. The only change from before was the notation that we would follow all local, state, and national laws regarding selection of library materials. So no other recommended changes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve library material selection as explained.
Motion by Moulton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's opposed? Got a little quick there, opposed. Okay, still no nays, so we'll approve IJL. All right, item 6.6.1, open enrollments.
We have no open enrollments or 13-28 plans.
Turn to communications and Dr. Danielson.
Yes, just a couple of things to note. Last, a big thank you to our substitutes. Last week on Thursday, we held a substitute appreciation day. That was good. We had a nice turnout. Got to talk to them a little bit, tell them thanks, and gave them, Mr. Barrios gave them the update on our safety protocols that we had just presented to the board. And then a shout out to the public, we are always looking for substitutes both for classroom positions as well as bus. So if anybody wants to do that or has been looking for things to do, we could use you. High school band concert tomorrow night here, December 10th at 7 o'clock. And then the chorus and orchestra is next Monday, week from tonight, 7 o'clock. And then we dismiss for Christmas break on the 20th and resume on January 2nd, so. And then I think I have a legislative update here, too. Is that correct? Yes. So it was alluded to during the Lake Area portion, but Governor Noem laid out our budget at the budget address last week. 1.25% recommendation from schools. I think we had been thinking it would be more in the 2.6 area based off of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. So a little disappointed there. Other cuts noted in the budget that may not be direct to K-12 schools, but will certainly have an impact. South Dakota Public Broadcasting, there's cuts to the TANF program, which could impact food stamps and some of the insurance programming for families in need. The State Library was cut, the, as noted, the dual credit program, which probably will mean more cost to students to access it. And then the South Dakota Board of Regents, just a generic cut that they get to decide what it is they cut, I guess, as listed in there. So of the cuts, many of them will have residual effects. They're not necessarily direct impacts on K-12 schools. And then the big piece that public schools will be paying attention to is the inclusion of something called an education savings account. There was $4 million written into the budget for that. And the education savings account is, as explained, and there would still be, need to be some regulations written behind that, but the gist of it would be is to set aside $3,000 for applicants to apply, and they could use that funding towards private school tuition and/or homeschooling, supplies, materials, subscriptions, if they chose to homeschool or choose alternative instruction. I think, you know, you will probably see the public schools oppose that. I did leave a sheet for you at your spots there, one of them. And these were both sent out by the Associate School Boards. But just some facts on school vouchers. And then if, by chance, the board would want to consider an actual opposition to this, to consider in January a sample, sample resolution. But the big thing with, as far as the savings accounts, vouchers, is the majority of students in our state attend public schools there. And you're talking about public dollars going towards non-public entities. You've got questions of church and state. There's been school choice for a number of years. I believe I learned last week that homeschool legislation has been offered since 1939. So that option has always been there. The open enrollment option has existed since 1997. So there is quite a bit of school choice. And there's also already adopted a scholarship program for instances like this that is already in place within the state. So to add to it would be very disappointing. So I think you'll probably see, and maybe you spoke more about that. I know, Carrie, you attended the Associate School Board's Delegate Assembly. But I think you'll see more information coming on that here as we get closer to the legislative session. We are meeting tomorrow with our legislators. They're all three, I would call them freshman legislators, Senator Glenn Vilhauer, and then Representatives Matt Rovey and Josephine Garcia. So looking forward to that dialogue with that group of folks, so.
Item 7.3, if there's anyone to speak on behalf of the board at the superintendent.
The State Library cut is a worry, too. I think I saw a million dollars, but I'm not sure. I don't remember the figure.
Mm-hmm, I think it was a million dollars.
Because a huge number of our databases are absolutely free. And that's true of every school and public library. We get free databases. That's immense research areas. And they are spending, very expensive. So those come free from the State Library as a service. That's a worry.
Yeah, I can see that happening.
Wasn't it like 12.5 FTE, I think, proposed with that? That's huge.
And I think they've already cut staff in the past, past years.
Yeah.
On a different topic, can I bring up the,
Yeah.
Watertown Cares is an organization that provides shelter for people who are temporary homeless. It's not a homeless shelter. It's a unit or group that provides housing for people who are temporarily in need of help. And some of those people are students. And I forget the exact number of the number of our students that had been housed there. Anyway, they're doing a fundraiser. And Sam Mooney is sleeping in a tent. God bless him. That would not be a whole lot of fun. And for every $1,000 that is donated, he gets one hour taken, or, yeah, one hour taken off of his commitment to sleep out in the streets. So you can follow on KXLG. They've got a lot of information, updates on that.
All right, so thank you very much. I'll now seek a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. We are now in executive session.